And do roll call.
I got it. Commissioner Freitas?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
I don't even have the names in here yet. Commissioner Lazar?
Present.
And Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave a salute to the flag?
Oh, sure, yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And did you say you were going to read those oaths of offices out loud?
Whenever you're ready, yes.
I think we're ready.
Okay. So we have two oaths of office this evening, one for Commissioner Meyer and one for Commissioner Freitas. So I'm going to go ahead and read them. If you would raise your right hand and when I point at you, state your name. I.
Dolores Freitas.
Meredith Meyer. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will trual, well, well, and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Eureka. And if you would just state whether you swear or affirm.
I swear.
I swear as well.
Thank you very much.
Democracy.
It looks like we need to do election of officers.
Can staff just give us a brief, or just let us know, how long are we electing officers for? What's the duration of the term? Only question.
Election of officers occurs the first meeting in January. So it's just for one year or until one of the positions becomes vacant.
And is this done by nomination process?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to nominate Meredith Meyer as Chair of the Planning Commission.
And I'd like to second that.
Do we have a suggestion for Vice Chair from the Commission?
I keep tagging Craig. I'll nominate Craig. Commissioner Benson, sorry.
Yeah, I would second that if he's willing to take it.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to roll call vote on that?
So we have a nomination for Chair of Commissioner Meyer and a nomination for Vice Chair of Commissioner Benson. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a second to those nominations? Thank you very much.
I could also make it all in one motion if that's easier procedurally. Okay.
Can I do a vote?
Yep. So Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. Approval of minutes from the December 13th, 2021 meeting. I was absent, so.
I will make a motion, sorry, I will make a motion to accept the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of December 13th, 2021.
I'm happy to second it.
All right.
Sorry, I'm just trying to figure which microphone's picking up. Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
So oral communications. Does anybody have or here to discuss anything not on the agenda?
And I don't see any hands on Zoom.
All right. Moving on, it looks like we have no continued public hearing, so we'll move on to a new public hearing for the Bodie Major Subdivision.
Hi, thank you. I was going to put in a quick note into the Zoom chat for the attendees on the Zoom. If you cannot, well, you cannot see our, the Planning Commission and the Council of Chambers on Zoom, so you would have to go to the City of Eureka's website to view it live. But I recommend not having your volume on, and I put a link in the chat if you want to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin, and one other thing you might want to note is the direct chats that you're receiving, we can see, so, you know, no funny business. And it sounds like we do need to remember to state our names when we're talking. I see that in your chat. So I'll try and remember to do that.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, I'll pull up the presentation. Screen share. Oh, host disabled, participant screen sharing.
You should be good now, Caitlin.
Great, thank you. Okay. Are you guys seeing the presentation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, good evening Commissioners. Sorry. Good evening Commissioners, tonight I'm presenting two projects together for the Bodie Subdivision Projects. The applicants, Mike and Ryan Bodie, seek approval of two tentative maps to subdivide two separate properties into four parcels, two parcels per subdivision. The subject properties were involved in two previous subdivisions, which created five parcels. Now the applicants are proposing to split the two parcels into four, which would bring the total number of parcels created to seven and requires the subdivision application be processed as major subdivisions. So here's our standard bird's eye view of the subject properties in the context of the city limits. Zooming in closer, the subject properties are located near the southern center city limits in a suburban-style neighborhood. Subdivision A at 3634 East Street proposes to subdivide a developed 13,386 square foot property, in other words, a 0.31 acre property into two parcels. And subdivision B proposes to subdivide an undeveloped 16,395 square feet, that's 0.38 acres, it's a flag lot into two parcels. Here's a Google street view of the original lot prior to subdivisions, looking southeast from Ponderosa Court. And here is the first of the two subdivisions that's happened before. In 2017, the original lot was split into two. And then in 2019, the applicant, same applicant split the larger western parcel into four lots for a total of five parcels. Some briefly, some site information, the general plan land use designation is LDR, Low Density Residential. It is in the R1 Residential Low Zoning District. The minimum lot size in these zone districts is 5,000 square feet. I did want to point out that with the new Senate Bill 9, which came into effect on January 1st of this year, now mandates that local jurisdictions allow property owners in single-family zones to build a duplex, and they could do an ADU. One parking space per dwelling unit is required unless it is reduced. Parking is not required for ADUs in our zoning code. And all major utilities are available to serve the parcels. Briefly, per the subdivision map act, five or more parcels must be processed as a major subdivision. Four or less are, is a minor subdivision, which is a director level decision. As stated in the introduction slide, the current applications must be processed as a major subdivision because the properties have been involved in previous subdivisions by the same applicant. The city subdivision ordinance is located in Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 153, which allows the Planning Commission to approve major subdivisions if they comply with the general plan and comply with any specific plan. After the Planning Commission's decision, and after a 15-day appeal period, staff will prepare a written report to the City Council on the Planning Commission's action. And then council can either endorse the Planning Commission's decision and approve the subdivisions, or they can decide to review the map and conditions at a new public hearing at a notice council meeting for the final decision. So here's the tentative map for subdivision A, which proposes to split the corner lot created in 2017. The existing single-family residence, ADU and garages will be on resultant parcel A1, which is, which will be approximately 7,300 square feet and remain a corner lot. And then the detached garage on resultant parcel A2 will be approximately 6,200 square feet and become an interior lot. Here's a recent street view. The yellow arrow is approximately where the lot line split would go. I couldn't really, sorry, the bad picture, so I put two to show the development on one side and then the garage on the other. Here's the subdivision, proposed subdivision B of the flag lot. Resultant parcel B1 would be approximately 9,200 square feet and remain a flag lot. And then resultant parcel B2 would be approximately 7,200 and would be assessed via a private road, which, right there, sorry, in green, over resultant parcel B1. And then due to an oversight error on my part, condition of approval five in subdivision B's resolution was revised to include a condition required by Public Works Engineering to specify that connection of resultant parcel B2 to the existing sewer main running through the southern portion of the property will result in the property owner taking responsibility for maintenance of that portion of the sewer main and not the city. So the city has encouraged the applicant to connect to Ponderosa Court, but in, but as requested by the subdivider, he, if he wants to connect to that lower, the southern sewer main, he'd have to take over maintenance responsibility. So here's the street view, looking up there, that would be the private road there. To the left of the screen, the property line would be essentially right where the arrow is, close to it. So staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution to approve conditions both of the proposed subdivisions, and here's a recommended motion, but I will stop screen sharing for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, there we go.
All right, do you guys have any questions for staff?
I have a question. So the earlier subdivision is, do we have an understanding of why the subdivisions are happening in a, in a separate fashion? Why a major subdivision wasn't sought from the beginning since it involves land that was under the control of the owner at the time of the prior subdivisions?
I do not know the reason why they were broken up. Certainly, we could ask the applicants while they're here.
Another question I had was with regard to the redevelopment of the corner property. I note that the original hip roof building was retained but enlarged, and I think there was mention in the staff report of it being surveyed and listed in the Green Book, which I think I was able to verify. But was it actually on the register or was it excluded from the local register?
It was excluded from the register, but it is in the Green Book.
And so there were no requirements or restrictions on the redevelopment of that at the time that it was done?
Correct, except that you just couldn't demolish the building.
Okay, thanks.
I had a couple of questions as well. This is Dilo Freitas. So the first was about the modified condition for the easement on the southern part of the property that you were referring to, Caitlin. So does that need to be modified in our, in our recommendation? Or is it already, is it already addressed in the current, in the current action?
Um, I, go ahead, Kristen.
A revised resolution was sent to you that included that language. So we would ask that you adopt the revised resolution.
Okay, so there's no need to necessarily alter the language in our motion? Okay, great. And then the other question was sort of like a broader question about the SEQA exemption being used. You know, typically there's an exemption for minor subdivisions, which is four parcels or fewer. And in this case, it's kind of an unusual one, I guess you could say, because it is only four lots, but it's part of a larger subdivision, you know, narrative, I guess. So, you know, I have no problem with this, the infill exemption being used, but it is a major subdivision technically, and I was curious to know if staff has had any discussions internally about, you know, what is the situation in which it's appropriate to use that exemption for a major subdivision and when it may not be as appropriate? If there has been any discussion about a threshold for that? Just because there may be other larger major subdivisions that come before the Commission in future where an infill exemption may not be appropriate.
I agree. I think Kristen Getz can elaborate after me if she'd like, but the previous subdivision in 2019, they also used an infill exemption. And I think the kicker here was that it really was truly an infill. It was a vacant field surrounded already by urban uses. Now, if, if the project was proposing to subdivide and it needed to, and it was near a bunch of greenfields, I'm sorry, like the forest, I would definitely say there was a unique circumstance, which would be an exception to the exemption. But really, it is consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the zoning code, all the utilities are available, doesn't impact any fish and wildlife. And so it just appeared that the infill exemption could apply.
Yeah, I agree, in this case, it's, seems very logical. I was just curious about, you know, future larger subdivisions. And just a note for staff, it'll be something I'll be thinking about in future.
It did come up as an item for us.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed the public works conditions or requirements I didn't see in a separate attachment to the staff report. So are there, is there a more precise document that outlines those requirements? Or is it all summarized in the resolution language, in the revised resolution language?
It's summarized in the revised resolution. There were various emails back and forth with Public Works on that sewer. They, they initially had said no, and then after they CTV'd the sewer line, the city did, and it was feasible to connect one of the, you know, the resultant parcel 1B to it, but not the other one. The city would prefer it go out to Ponderosa Court. But the, I mean, it's in the record in the file. Generally, we don't attach referral responses, but by all means, we can start gathering those and putting them on staff reports. Attachments.
And I would just point to, I would assume, but I'd like to not assume that sidewalks will be required along the property frontage?
So that was something that Public Works Engineering did not require because all of Ponderosa Court on that south side does not have sidewalks. So they were being consistent with the rest, with the south side of that street. And I did inquire about that, and they did not require it. I'm not sure if it would be appropriate, Kristen Getz, if this is something that's really important, that maybe the condition, the Commission can condition that, I'm not sure.
I would just offer, we don't see minor land divisions, right? So we don't get to see what the typical director level decisions and the conditions that are applied. But in the case of infill subdivision, sidewalks, plank, E Street on both sides, the other side of the Ponderosa's not developed. And maybe at the, in the future, it would make sense, it's closer to the trunk of the road system. And prior development patterns, to me, are not as troublesome, especially when you're citing an infill subdivision exemption. But I'm not sure what's customary, so that's why I'm looking for more clarity on that.
So I would say in this particular instance, because it was brought up as a specific issue, and the Public Works Department did make a determination that they were not going to require it, and that information was provided to the developer, then he's not expecting to have to put in sidewalks.
I've got a couple of questions as well. One is just more general. My understanding of SB 9 is that this would be principally permitted. So is this before the Planning Commission tonight because, simply because it was initiated as a major subdivision prior to January 2022? So is it sort of a mishap for the proposer in timing? That this would sort of be a non-issue if they had proposed now as opposed to in the past?
No. It's before you because it is a major subdivision.
And not having to do with the timing of it?
No.
Understood, so it would be a major subdivision either way and not principally permitted?
So the uses that are being proposed or will be proposed on the sites will be principally permitted. Single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit. But, yeah, it's a major subdivision, so it's coming before the Planning Commission.
Thank you, thank you very much. And then just after, you know, reading the letters of Ann Lesser, Rick Knapp, Gordon Shelby, Louis, Eric Escher, Ty Morin, Market, Nicole Logg, Colin Crati, something that I, I saw a number of questions on that I would also like clarity on is, you know, what is the maximum density allowed before this could no longer be considered low-density residential? Is that just a very complicated equation that's supersite-specific? Or is there a more generalized answer for that?
Let me see if I can give that one a shot. So according to the general plan, the R1 Zone District allows one dwelling unit and one accessory dwelling unit per site.
Correct.
State law has since come along and made changes to that. State law now says that we have to allow one single-family residence, one junior accessory dwelling unit within the footprint of that residence, and one accessory dwelling unit. That was in 2020 that that part of the law came into effect. On January 1st, 2022, SB 9 was adopted or became effective. And what SB 9 says is that in an R1 Zone District, a property owner can choose to add a second single-family dwelling or single-family home to a site. That means that they could have a single-family home, a junior accessory dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit, and a second single-family home. There's some more options that are available under SB 9 with doing subdivisions. But since that's not proposed, I'm not sure that you need that explanation this evening. Let me know if you do.
Great, no, thank you, I understood the explanation, and it's one that I've, that I've heard before, but I just also partly asked the question just to give clarity to, to the public about this is still low-density residential regardless of how dense it may appear relative to the rest of the, of the court. My last question is, are any of the buildings under construction currently considered to be duplexes?
They are considered a primary dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit. The ones under construction, the accessory dwelling unit is about half the size of the primary unit.
I'm taking that, that the answer is no, that they are not duplexes specifically. Is that correct?
Correct, the City of Eureka is not going to use the terminology of duplexes on single-family residential zone properties.
Understood, thank you very much.
In your staff report, you did say though, a duplex plus an ADU. So was that just misstated?
It was, we were, we're still in the process of figuring out exactly what to call these units that could be allowed by state law. I think we've settled on a single-family home.
So just to be clear, in the simplest form, there could be four dwelling units per parcel at the maximum?
Correct.
Commissioners have any more questions for staff? Okay, we can open for a public comment, and just as a reminder, there will be a three-minute warning. I don't know how that works via Zoom. Do they get a notice? Okay.
We'll let them know. And the applicant is with us in the audience, and I think he'd like to speak to.
Great. Please just make sure to state your name.
Yes, Mike Bodie, I'm the developer. Just to talk a little bit about why it got strung out is we subdivided the house off for financing off the other parcel so that we only had one parcel encumbered. Then we went in, in 2000, I think it's 19, we went in and subdivided into four pieces, but the rules were different. We could only have, we had to have 6,000-foot lots, we couldn't have a lot on a flag lot. In 2000, what is it, 2020, they changed all the rules. So at, when we first did it, we were trying to get under the energy, old energy codes, we went and applied for three houses, which were under construction on two of them. The third one is in the building apartment. And the back half, we decided, we, after the new rules, the City of Eureka went through their Planning Commission, and you guys probably were involved in changing all the rules for density on the subdivision, which I could have lowered those lot sizes to 5,000 feet, which I did have a plan to even subdivide farther, but I thought it was too restrictive, you know, not enough room. So we only went with the two parcels in the back, the big parcels, and then another parcel next to the house. That's why that subdivision got strung out, and we're here now asking for the other parcels. And that's, that's the long and short of the story. Any other question I can answer you? We have a development plan, we, we plan on doing ADU units, not duplexes, not four parcels on one, you know, four houses on one parcel. And the lots are the same size as all the neighbors have. They're all 6,000-foot lots down around the subdivision, so, and we're still 6,000 or better. We're trying to improve the neighborhood and make a nice spot. We are in the middle of a housing crisis, and you need all the parcels we can get right now. Any other questions?
No, but if you would stick around, we might have some after the public comment.
Be glad to come back.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Daniel Brick, I live on 109 Ponderosa Court. So I moved in a couple of years ago. I moved from Southern California because of the housing crisis. So I, I, I've never owned a house, but I've owned, I own now. So I have a renter's heart, I really do. I, I actually really feel for the people of Eureka right now. I see the housing going way up, way too much. It's not even worth the, the property values that are going up, you know, because of the housing crisis. I've seen this in Southern California. I guess my question is for Mr. Bodie. What exactly are you trying to do?
You'll need to speak in the microphone, and I'm not entirely sure that, that your question to him is in order at the moment. So if you'd like to address the council, this is your time to do so.
How many units, how many families will live on that big parcel that he's working on right now? Many units, how many families will live on that big parcel that he's working on right now? How many families?
We don't generally do a question and answer, so this is just your time to address the the council.
Okay.
But we're keeping track of your questions.
My my question is, how many families are going to live on the parcel? Because one of the things that I saw when I moved on Ponderosa Court was, wow, this street is beautiful. There's a there's there's consistency, there's character. And me and my wife love to drive around Eureka because you got some really beautiful streets in Eureka. You also got some ugly streets, really ugly streets, with houses that are deteriorating and stuff like that. I I think from hearing the people on Ponderosa Court, they're concerned that the character of Ponderosa Court, the beauty of Ponderosa Court, the consistency of Ponderosa Court is going to be ruined. If if he's going to build all these units, and all you're going to see when you drive into Ponderosa Court is this big parcel on the left with a bunch of units, is it consistent with the beauty of the street and of the lots? I'm not concerned about property values. I'm concerned about, is it an eyesore? Because if we really want to address the housing problem, why don't these developers go buy acreages and totally level the ground and put in twelve hundred affordable housing units instead of maybe ruining some of these beautiful streets? For some reason, I feel like this is going to be an eyesore on Ponderosa Court. And for some reason, I don't feel like you're really trying to address.
You'll have to speak into the microphone for people.
For some reason, I I I just, I'm not questioning your integrity, Mr. Bodie. But my question is, do you really care about the housing or are you really trying to make some money on this property? That would be my question. I think that's a question that a lot of people have right now with this project. Because originally, the project was accepted in two thousand seventeen, and it was going to look good in regards to consistency of the neighborhood. I'm not quite sure that's what we're dealing with now.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Go through the Zoom list.
Yeah, at this point in time, I'm not seeing any hands raised or anybody waving at us. So if there's anybody on if there's anybody on Zoom.
Your time is is.
If if there was anybody on.
My question is, if you guys lived on Ponderosa Court, would you want this?
Has passed.
If you lived on Ponderosa Court, would you want this?
So we have one hand raised on Zoom, Eric Escher.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I want to say that I don't know Mr. Bodie and his family and the developers. I hear that they're nice people, that they're not slum lords or anything. And I it was very helpful talking with the staff, Caitlin, the city here. But getting that out of the way, I'm an economist. I study housing among other things. Fifteen years ago, the Times Standard quoted me as saying, we're going to see a property, a massive property value drop. And that exactly came to pass what I predicted. So I understand the things that can impact property values. I I reside, by the way, on Ponderosa Court. Okay, and I'm looking at this staff report, and I cannot believe what I'm seeing. There is language in the staff report that says that the character of these new proposed subdivisions is the same of the other ones that were proposed in two thousand seventeen. I mean, that's insincere, disingenuous, and not the whole point of it. We're looking at the character of the block, which is captured. There's no other way in or out of that community right there. So you all got an email from me, and on page five, I had a map, I have a map of Ponderosa, which the staff report does not show the whole map of Ponderosa. I it is beyond belief how they don't do that. If you look at what are similar-sized structures, four, four is the number that should be on that land. And indeed, four was approved a few years ago, and the neighbors are all fine with that. You, the planning commissioner, commission right now, and then by extension, the city council, and then by extension, the city, the residents of Eureka are not being treated nicely. This is I I don't understand what's happening. You're not being treated well, and we should not stand for this. This is what you call incremental building, incremental permitting that CECO would not allow, from what I understand. I'm not a builder. I don't know all the specifics here. So what you have to do as a planning commission is you have to ask yourself, are you being having the wool pulled over your eyes? When is the next time that Bodie and others are going to come forward and say, we want to do it again? No one is telling us right now how many buildings are going up there. How can you report, supply a staff report without indicating, there's a section that says buildable area? There's nothing that says this is how much we're going to build. And so now I just heard an extra unit, that you have a main unit, one ADU, a secondary ADU, and then you can split the lot and and then with two oh nine and no parking needed for that? So this is going to come up. This cannot be the test, or maybe this is the test case. But don't have the wool pulled over your eyes with this planning commission. And as you as you think about and as you act on behalf of the totality of Eureka, realize what's happening here. I don't understand this report. This report is incomplete. We're not given information on how many houses are being built. And you have the rest of my comments. My my time is almost up. But I I just want to let you know that when I talk, my my, all of my neighbors are very upset about this. If you look at this, this changes the character, and it's going to impact property values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have Joseph and Nicole Logg with their hand raised?
Yeah, my name is Joseph Logg. I live at two forty Ponderosa Court. I my property actually borders the southwestern edge of the proposed major subdivision. Yeah, I I just wanted to express my opposition to this. I think my my biggest concern with this so far right now is is the the quantity of buildings that can be developed on each parcel. I mean, I can say all day long that I'm going to do one thing, but if given the opportunity, I could do any number of things. Yeah, I I just wanted to make sure my voice was heard on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom.
All right, I'll bring it. I'll close the public and bring it back to council.
You know, I think I'd just like to start the discussion. This is Delo Freitas. And say that this reminds me a little bit of the minor subdivision that we saw that was outside of Henderson Center. Similar concern from the neighbors about infill. But sort of a similar case in that it seemed to meet the development standards that were approved, the zoning code update. I understand that this came about as a result of those updates to the zoning code that were approved. All of this sequel was done. The council endorsed it, and that happened a few years ago now. So I would encourage the commission to discuss the findings of approval as drafted for this project and see if there are any concerns with the findings made by staff.
This is Commissioner Lazar. I I think one thing that's probably useful, may not be very satisfactory, but for the public's benefit, and I'll ask staff to confirm my characterization of it. A developer is not required to submit a plan for a total buildout of a subdivision. It's helpful, and it's it can sometimes be problematic because you're committing yourself to something that might need to evolve. As any builder knows, there are just things that are unexpected that you have to pivot with. So while it is helpful, it is not a requirement, as I understand it, for the us to have final buildout of any of the lots being proposed for subdivision tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, where the lines blur on that or where design review comes into play, where development plans and agreements come in, there can be concessions made by the developer. There can be things that lock in certain components of an application. And I see some of the struggle, as Commissioner Freitas was just mentioning in the prior subdivision project, is that people want that that vision. They want to be assured that what will emerge is not going to be my worst nightmare, but I can't envision it because there's nothing to look at. I can only see the lots in the the worst possible scenario that I can envision. So I guess to that end, one thing I read in the public comments was that there was an expectation of a sort of agreement of sorts that this was what the buildout was going to be, and now this is being revisited. And I guess I'd be interested in Mr. Bodie speaking to that, whether there was ever any kind of dialogue with the neighborhood, or there's any kind of commitment to build out at a certain density and design. Because I think that's some of the frustrations we're hearing is this speculation that it could be bigger than that. I I I just wanted to clarify that for some of the folks that have been speaking so far.
Maybe before Mr. Bodie speaks, I could just add too that, again, the state law has changed both in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-two. So there are now more dwelling units that are allowed on those lots than were previously allowed. So that is one thing that changed. We have no control over that. At this point in time, Mr. Bodie has indicated he's not willing or not desirous of fully building out each lot. But he does have that right.
And I and I think planner gets I think that part of it is that there's only so much that you can control. Once you sell a property, it opens the door to a whole new potential scenarios. And every anyone who lives next to a neighbor and sees properties change hands knows that that can have a dramatic effect. But I guess to the extent that when you have control over the land and you have the ability to kind of, you know, settle those sorts of confusions, you can make promises to some extent. So yeah, back to my question. Wouldn't mind, Mr. Bodie?
Yes. Actually, this is the first time I've ever heard from any of the neighbors. Besides them complaining about dirt on the street and we have to go out and sweep it off. My neighbor down here, we have three houses already approved. Two of them are already constructed. You know, we're waiting on PG&E. It's been a year and a half, and we're still waiting on PG&E. We have a third house. Those are all you're going to see from the street. The house, the subdivision in the back are completely out of sight. They're up a private road. You know, I don't know what to tell him. My dad was an architect. I design all my own stuff. I've lived in here for seventy-three years. I've been building things in the county. I don't do a bad job. And I won't ruin this neighborhood. My neighborhoods are usually a lot better than their neighborhoods.
One thing, I think I think I I can ask this because I think it'll be an easy one for you to answer in the affirmative. It is your it is your plan to fully develop the lots prior to sale. Is that correct?
Yes.
No one else will be doing that. They will be developed when they're sold.
Yes. And right now, it it the plan is is not to sell them for a while. He wants to know how many people are going to live in there. The most of them are three bedrooms. There'll be one family and probably one other single person that lives as a mother-in-law. That'll be it. Because you have a three-bedroom house with a one-bedroom AU, which is over the garage. So you have a family plus one, probably one person or one couple lives in the AU.
At this time, do you plan on basically just recreating those same styles you have on the front of the lot? I walked there today. There's the darker blue ones.
We build that. We've already built one.
Right.
We built built a second one. The third one is just a is the same house flipped over with a different roof line. And then in the back, they're completely different.
The the flag lot that's being divided will have a different.
Yeah, but they won't ever see those. The road goes up and they're out of sight. And then there's the one other unit next to the one next to the house we redid on the corner.
Where the garage is located. Where the barn slash garage is.
Where, yeah, yeah, the barn is. That, we were talking about just putting a single-family house in. Because we're having trouble with the gas. They can only, won't supply us gas. So that's that's our, we have an option. We could, that that's kind of that house, that place where the barn is, is kind of in limbo right now. But we will be doing all the construction on all of them, and we will put them up for sale when my son decides to sell them.
Mr. Bodie, thank you. One of the questions that that I saw on several of the public comments as well was just sort of a a a lack of clarity about how many structures will be built. I think that it's it's pretty clear now that there's seven parcels. But what will be the total amount of structures at the end of the buildout?
Seven.
Okay.
Because the structure, the way we build ADUs, they're part of the main structure house. They're usually the, there's usually a three-car garage and the ADUs above the garage, whether the garage is in the front or in the back. And the ADUs on the lot next door is in the back. So all the traffic goes up the street, and parking's all in the back, not on the street.
Thank you for that clarity. That's quite helpful. Just curious about about the the mud tracking into the street. I've I've already heard you give testimony that, you know, that you do street cleaning, which which in my mind is the third line of defense, you know, water flow control being the first, having stabilized. Construction entrance would be the second. Do you plan any other BMPs other than street cleaning?
Well, we have we have gravel up there, gravel and wa, you know, all kind of waddle all around to try to keep everything out. It was from the trucks driving out up in the back. But the other thing is, is there's no sidewalk on that side of the street. It's all on the other side of the street. There's the undeveloped side of the street. All has sidewalk down it. So the, you know, on that Ponderosa subdivision, it's one side of the one side of the whole subdivision has a sidewalk on it. The other side doesn't. It was a thing they used to do in the seventies.
Understood. Yeah, I went to the site today, and I and I and I was trying to take note of the BMPs at the driveway. And it sure, it it wasn't obvious to me that there was a stabilized construction entrance that would allow two and a half rotations of a tire, for example, and that the aggregate material was big enough to create a shaking.
Yeah, the aggregate material goes up there a hundred feet.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess since you spoke about the sidewalks, and I did bring it up earlier, the property that you acquired that's been subdivided now several times was not part of the Ponderosa subdivision. It was a lot fronting on East Street that had a long depth to it.
Uh, no, the owner, the previous owner that I bought it from, I think, sold the back part to the Ponderosa subdivision.
Right.
And in the exchange, there was sewer line stubbed into and water line stubbed into that property already. So it was not part of the subdivision. That's where we're having trouble with the power. He stubbed the power across the street, but PG&E doesn't want to put it in this lines they put in in the seventies. So.
I guess I ask because the sidewalk construction is appropriate at the time of subdivision. I mean, it it in terms of that conversation, and this is the time we're entertaining further re-subdivision of the land you acquired.
Another thing I think was a problem, a lot of problem is is the bank slopes up pretty fast there.
Yeah, I noticed that. And there hasn't been any discussion with Public Works regarding sidewalk improvements?
It was, it's all was part of the subdivision was the sidewalks are all on the other side of the street.
The prior subdivision, but not not the subdivision we're talking about tonight.
Well, they they're not, they didn't require any on that side of the street. Ten U P, ten-foot PUE they want, which is fine with me.
Along the south side of Ponderosa, the front edge.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions for Mr. Bodie? Thank you.
Thanks.
Kristin, could you remind the commission really quick what Eureka's arena is for the cycle? Do you know off the top of your head how many units, just ballpark?
I want to say nine hundred and two, but please don't hold me to that.
Okay.
I was going to say eight, high eight hundreds.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because, so arena is a regional housing, needs allocation for anyone in the public who may not know. And that's a requirement from the state to build a certain number of units in a certain amount of time. I think we're on the eight-year cycle. And, you know, this is, I think, would probably be considered moderate or likely above moderate income housing stock. This is for professionals. This is for your doctors and your teachers and your police officers, people who can afford to buy into this market. And we need housing for that demographic. We need. And we need housing for uh that demographic. We need housing for every demographic. And I think Eureka is doing a pretty good job of providing for lower-income residents through their parking lot apartment program and other other means. But this is also a really important part of meeting our regional housing need. And these units and ones like them are kind of hard to come by in Eureka's urban core. Uh and it's exciting, in my perspective, to see projects like this come forward and create this type of housing for this type of family. Uh I had a friend growing up who lived on the street. It's a beautiful street, right by Grant School, my alma mater. I think this is a good project, near to a lot of amenities, and I think it will be a perfect place for for new families. And I'm willing to make a motion unless there's further discussion on this.
And if I could just clarify, it's nine hundred and fifty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Freitas, for for bringing up arena and and goals for for that and and Principal Planner Guts for giving us that number at nine fifty-two. Um you know, it's it's important for us to 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 understand, you know, what's being tried, what's what's what we're trying to accomplish as a city and what's the long range interest of the communities and and the guidance that we can get from zoning code and and building code and foundational documents. And you know, from my perspective, um this is for for discussion with commissioners is it seems that, you know, the concerns that this that this major subdivision is somehow sidestepping the rules doesn't appear, that doesn't appear to be the case. Here, there's a timing issue, um but it doesn't seem like a a a sidestep. Um and then, you know, that the sewer capacity is being addressed. It's a big concern of of landowners and and uh residents. Seems to be addressed on page two and item item five of the resolution really well as the concern about impervious surface and stormwater drainage seems to be addressed in page two, item three of the resolution. Um I think the question about whether parcel B two will be accessed by parcel B one has been has been clarified tonight. And so so I I I concur that it's it's something that uh I I don't feel that 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 we need to notice this for for city council to decide. I think this is in the purview of the Plan- Planning Commission. I think we have the documents that that from my perspective, um that there, I I can't see a reason why we why why we cannot say yes to it. And and so it seems to be in the purview of the Planning Commission to decide about this rather than sending it back to council for larger um strategic, um you know, initiatives. It is something that is um helping us accomplish what, you know, more housing and high arena housing. But it but I also want to acknowledge that there's there's pain at the level of the community to see SB nine rules start to come into place. And we're gonna continue to have this sense of the neighborhood is changing and it's not exactly in the character of the neighborhood. And and I and I and I want to affirm that for the rest of Ponderosa court, this may seem out of character. If I look at certain parcels along East Street, it's not necessarily out of character. But but I think that's gonna be a valid observation by by the by the public. And as we create more density while still remaining single-family residential. And uh and and it's just, it's gonna be a learning curve for all of us to learn how to adapt to to this. So so I I I think that um uh you know, I can't really think of of anything that I need to 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 know to be able to even make a decision about this tonight. Um I I thought about when I came tonight, I I was a little bit pre-decisional, thinking maybe this is something we should put off. But I, you know, I I read the list of people that we've heard from tonight and additional people speaking. You know, I I was worried about democracy and about transparency and about there being adequate time uh for the public to really respond. But given the the number of 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 emails and public respondents and the amount of people who live in in on that court, you know, I feel like we wouldn't necessarily get a lot of additional information than what we got tonight as well. So the extension of this to another for another month doesn't seem to have um merit relative to the applicant's need and and that the applicant is building currently as well. There seems to be a timeliness about this, so I'll I'll stop there. But those are my comments for the commission.
I appreciate you saying that, cause I too am sensitive. It's we're residents of Eureka and I live adjacent to empty lots. And I I see that in the future of my neighborhood as well, and I know how upsetting it is. I walked this neighborhood today and they truly didn't actually see that out of place to me. And it seems like there is space in the back. And like um Mr. Bodie was saying, that those ones behind are gonna be hardly seen and visible from where it was at. The sidewalk thing was really weird and it was uncomfortable to have to cross to walk, so that's a bummer, but it sounds like that ship has sailed, so. I agree with you. It is, it's sensitive and I don't want that to sound like the commission. I think we're always really sensitive to that, especially when things are you know, a lot of people have a lot of feelings about it, but that's outside of our purview really. And I agree with you that it's kind of met met all the criteria here.
So I I guess one thing I would just offer, I I was a little troubled at the timing of the notice. Uh December thirtieth mailing and notice with a hearing and, you know, basically two weeks following that over the holidays. You know, it's never a great timing, but that always is the issue this time of year with projects in all governments. I do agree with my fellow commissioners that we did receive quite a bit of public comment. To the extent that um this, I think, is destined for the city council regardless because it's a major subdivision and was that not correct the way I read? Okay, um so I I don't think that anything we do tonight would change the trajectory. But in that regard, I guess I would just say that the developer, I I I'm troubled by the sidewalks, but I don't think it's fair to make you the, you know, the target of that, just because it's suddenly on our radar that, you know, we're thinking about that. Infill development in my mind is development that's served by sidewalks. So I get that the development pattern in this neighborhood doesn't reflect that. There were earlier concessions and design choices prior subdivisions. But you you know, part of, to me, when you get density and you get uh you the exchange is you provide the infrastructure to support it and that's part of the infrastructure um in my mind. I don't think I feel comfortable requiring it, certainly not at a hearing. It certainly would give you the ability to like work that out. I think tonight that, like you said, the ship has sailed, but I would put it to staff that I don't see that as appropriate, especially when you're using infill subdivision SEQA exemptions. Um and if we had a climate action plan that was in place, it would probably require it, frankly, as a policy choice for the developer to, you know, that it would be an automatic. Um but that is neither here nor there. I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is to the public um who's expressed concerns about the density of development. Frankly, I think as much as this may sound perverse, you probably should be grateful because he, the developer or a future developer could invoke a much higher density than what we're seeing tonight. And the fact that Mr. Bodie will be developing the lots out will essentially commit them to the density that's far below the target that the state has required of all jurisdictions to accept. So as much as it might feel really dense, it's actually less dense than what is being promulgated under the changes at state level. And then lastly, I guess I'd just say um I went back and forth. I I was, you know, I noticed, I I I fish with some guys that live down East Street. I've driven by the the Kipdruth building on the corner for the last several years and I was delighted to see it getting a foundation, getting spruced up. I am troubled continuously by these structures that are listed, you know, as architecturally significant, but not actually like given any kind of protection. And under state law, if it was listed, it would not be allowed to be removed. I saw the report from Joe McDonald about the barn. I'm not really worried about that. And I guess I ultimately landed on, I want to thank you for choosing to keep the building, choosing to figure out a way to marry it with a larger footprint. Because to me, that's the only way that old buildings can survive is if they actually have a use. And um it's not uh it's not without precedent as far as buildings being conserved. There's many buildings throughout the city that were moved from various parts of the city as they gave way to new development patterns. And so um it would have been nice to take all of that up in one fell swoop. But I understand that, you know, there's a sequence of things and as you mentioned, financing and things to kind of get the ball rolling. Here we are today and you're closing in on the final buildout. So I do want to thank you for choosing to keep the building, even though you didn't have to technically, and finding a way to do it in a way that was sensitive to the the feel of the home and the design and the massing and all of it. So thank you for that. And yeah, with I don't have any other things I want to say. I'm I'm prepared to vote.
Okay, I would like to move uh that the Planning Commission adopt resolutions to conditionally approve the tentative maps for the Bodie major subdivisions.
Will you clarify? That's the the revised resolution that we received? In the email, yeah.
Yeah, Caitlin, is that the revised motion?
Here, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Screen share. So it looks like I did not put it in the quotes, but you would just say, I move the Planning Commission adopt resolution, one revised resolution and one resolution to condition- conditionally approve.
Okay, I move the Planning Commission adopt one revised resolution and one resolution to conditionally approve the tentative maps for the Bodie major subdivisions.
And ultimately, this is a recommendation to the city council, correct? Not not an actual action beyond that?
No, it is an actual action.
Okay.
What will happen at the city council is that it will be provided to them as a report. They can then choose to have it come back to them at a public hearing.
Okay. So the resolution reflects that we're also choosing to find the project exempt for the infill section of SEQA. I I I'll second the.
Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh we will move on to B, Sensi Roots Cannabis.
Good evening. I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. The next agenda item is an application from Kanani Lincoln, doing business as Sensi Roots, requesting approval of a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit to operate an indoor cannabis cultivation facility located at thirty-nine fifty-six Jacobs Avenue. Here's the general project location. And zooming in, the red outline is the APN and the star shows the location of the proposed project, which is located on the southeastern portion of an approximately two-point-five acre parcel and the easternmost end of Jacobs Avenue, adjacent to the Eureka flow. Jacobs Avenue is a mostly light industrial and commercial area with other cannabis businesses nearby. The site has a general services, commercial land use designation and his own service commercial and is located in the coastal zone. A conditional use permit is required in the CS Zone District for in indoor cannabis cultivation, five thousand square feet or less. And since the site is located in the coastal zone, the conditionally permitted use also requires a CDP. The city's coastal development permit decision is appealable to the Coastal Commission. Commission staff has not provided comments on the project. The applicant is also proposing cannabis distribution. However, distribution with cannabis on-site is principally permitted use and does not require a CUP or a CDP. Although the applicant is applying for a CUP for the entire building, the portion of the first floor, roughly two thousand square feet, is currently occupied by humble dog training. They will continue to occupy the space and both uses have locked access to their individual areas. The applicant plans to expand into the entire building in the future. Sensi Roots will be propagating cannabis plant clones to supply to farmers, which is an important part of the cannabis supply chain. Production is to be conducted within three freestanding and self-enclosed propagation rooms, two nurseries and one clone room to be constructed within an existing warehouse space. The combined cultivation area for all three rooms is twelve-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet. Although the site is limited to under fifteen-hundred square feet at this time, at the app, at the applicant's request, the use permit and CDP will cover the entire building up to five thousand square feet of cultivation area. The rest of the space, including the second-floor mezzanine, which is showed here, will be utilized for offices and restrooms. No retail sales to the general public are proposed. No exterior changes to the building are proposed at this time and there is no ground disturbing activity associated with the project. Any tenant signs will be approved under a separate sign permit application. The project site is located within the map tsunami inundation area and is at risk of tsunami inundation. The so tsunami risk can best be minimized through timely evacuation from the tsunami inundation zone. Therefore, a condition has been added requiring the applicant submit a tsunami safety plan for review and approval by Development Services. The site is also in the floodplain at a location that is already vulnerable to flooding and that will become increasingly vulnerable in the future with future sea level rise. However, the proposed project consists of occupying an existing building with a new use without any proposed alterations to the major structural elements of the building that would extend the life of the building in this hazardous area. Furthermore, the proposed use is a cannabis clone nursery with only as many as eight employees, without any retail sales to the general public that could attract significant numbers of people to Jacobs Avenue. Overall, the project as conditioned is consistent with the general plan, zoning code and local coastal program and will result in infill development utilizing a portion of the existing structure. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a planning commission commission resolution approving with conditions the proposed indoor cannabis cultivation of five thousand square feet or less. The suggested motion was modified with the additions, as you saw in the um staff report that came around after the first one, with the addition of conditions three through six, which are imposed specifically for cannabis cultivation. These conditions require the permitting to obtain state and local cannabis licenses, install, operate and maintain odor control measures, apply to the building and fire and police departments for approval and install and maintain appropriate security systems. Um I did modify the motion on screen. I understand from Kristen that you can just say um you don't have to read the whole part about the um you know, as it's proposed on here, you can just say a mod- modify and read the um other motion. Myself and the applicant as well as staff are here for questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I have one quick one. I believe I read this in the staff report, but there are other cannabis-related businesses in that same area, correct? In the same zone?
No, no, there was a an applicant prior to us. I believe they would uh started the process about a year and a half or so ago. Um and then decided to withdraw their application. So we we will actually be the only vendor in our specific area um and certainly within the APN.
There are some along Jacobs Avenue though already.
Okay.
In the same zone district.
Okay.
This is the time for the Planning Commission to ask questions of staff.
Thank you both.
I was a little troubled on the tsunami evacuation route. I don't think I'd want to be here if a tsunami were to hit. But uh but I guess to the extent that this is something, I guess I would ask staff, uh is this is this a standard condition that gets applied and throughout the yellow-mapped areas for new development?
Yes.
Yeah, it's one that's becoming more and more applicable. Um it's kind of based on the one that we did for Betty's Community Housing.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't see a great solution. I, you know, the roof of the building might be the best place to go, frankly. Yeah, well, I don't see a great solution. I, you know, the roof of the building might be the best place to go frankly.
I do not have specific questions. This is Commissioner Benson on, on this project since, you know, we were. Seem to be approving nearly one of these per month and we've gone over in other meetings. Odor treatment, air treatment, building, security, and we're starting to see a repetition of, of the answers from staff about that. That have satisfied the commission in the past, so I have no more questions for staff.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment.
And as you can see, we have nobody here with us in the audience and I don't see anybody raising their hand. So unless the applicant has a comment that he'd like to share, then I think we're done.
Not particularly. Just want to thank you for taking the time to review our application. And to pose any questions that you may have had.
Thank you for taking the time to be here. It doesn't appear that, oh.
So this is not a question for staff. This is a question for the applicant. We had a prior approval of an indoor cultivation facility in the tower or the bridge district, I think. And I asked the applicant whether they would be agreeable to. Committing to purchase energy through the renewable energy, solar energy as part of their operation. And they were, and I think it's appropriate for anyone who uses a lot of energy. I understand the difference between. Propagation, vegetative state nursery situations and full term indoor cultivation. I know it's significantly less. But nevertheless, eighteen hours of light every day required to keep them from flowering, so. You're gonna do what you need to, to do it in the most sensible way that provides the light that you want for the plant and doesn't cost you an arm and a leg. Through LED and whatnot, and I don't need to worry about that, but to the extent that you, you could. Choose to use power that's sourced from renewable sources, that's clean. That would be something I'd like to see, but it is not an automatic requirement of the zoning code.
Sure. Oh, I mean, the, the short answer is, is absolutely. A slightly more in-depth answer is we actually. You know, if indeed this, this project goes as we're hoping. Within the next few years, part of our three-year prospectus is to start looking into because of just the sheer volume of. Roof space available on the building itself. As we have been looking into, uh, you know, the outback battery storage solar systems as well. You know, if we're going to be there in the long term, I think making the transition to as much. Renewable energy is, as we can, um, is going to not only be, you know, a beneficial. Environmental stance for us to take, but in the long run will probably be a pretty wise economic decision for us as well.
So let me ask, if, if, if we were to have a condition associated with your approval tonight that read something like. Cause right now you could just be approved with a commitment to purchase renewable energy. And all you do is make sure that RCEA knows that you're gonna pay for the higher tier, you know, the one that's a certain rate per kilowatt hour. That's, don't have to make any investment, no commitment and you're covered. But if in the event that you invest in onsite infrastructure that would offset your electrical usage by. Generating electricity that would be either equal to or greater than the amount of energy that you use onsite, then. Purchasing power at the higher rate would be no longer necessary because you're supplying your own power essentially by using the grid inner tie. So i- if, if, if the condition were to be written in a way and applied that either or is fine and, or some combination thereof. But a commitment to do that from onset and keep with renewable energy whether onsite or by purchasing power that's from renewable sources.
Sure. So from the onset, we're talking, um, you know, at the very least to, to be doing a supplemental purchase when available.
It's just, it's available right now and if you, I mean, if you were using the building for an office, you could say to. You know, we want to be in the solar, you know, version of the, the power structure to the local. And PG&E has a similar option of, I think it's a solar choice program. But it, it, it shows that you're, you're paying at a rate commensurate with what the renewable energy costs to. To furnish you with the power you use monthly.
Yeah, we, we would have no objection to that.
And I would offer that it's something that you can leverage as you market your cannabis that, you know, it's grown with renewable energy, you know. That's something that, you know, you actually will set you apart from maybe other people that are in areas that don't really look that closely at, at that type.
No, I, I agree completely, you know, as this, the industry progresses, there's gonna be a number of, of steps that we need to take to. You know, to appeal to certain markets. And so one of them is we are, uh, you know. Engaged in discussions with one of the other tenants on the property at the T-Lab. To start creating. It, an organic base for especially the clients of ours that are gonna be growing specifically for. Edible services. So I think any type of participation, you know, either in renewable or. You know, organic certifications is gonna be just mutually beneficial.
Okay, so it sounds to me like the applicant's agreeable to committing to. Operate under a permit that requires renewable energy either through onsite production or, uh, purchase of energy. That's from renewable sources. So I, I would, I'd be comfortable with approval if, if that was included as a requirement. In addition to the conditions that are in the staff report.
That would go far with me too, to, you know, increase my level of support for this applicant.
Yeah, in the past, when we discussed this, my perspective was to wait until we could do it more at a policy level. As opposed to a case by case basis, but I'm kind of changing my position now. Because we still don't have a cannabis ordinance. And I have no problem with this, so I think that, you know, if you continue to bring it up on this type of application, I'll continue to support it.
Okay, well, I feel like I should make a motion if we're done with discussion, but do we have any other discussion, I guess? Okay. Well, I want to thank the applicant for being agreeable to that. It isn't a part of our ordinance, but I do think it's appropriate. And it may ultimately be required for your state license down the road, so you may be saving yourself from future. Yeah. Um, so I would move that we approve this project, uh, subject to the conditions as revised and amended in the. PowerPoint slide that we were, we were seeing and also to include the measure for renewable energy. As the power source for all, uh, all the energy, all, all power used at the site. Um, and that can occur through either purchase of renewable energy from offsite sources or generation of. Renewable energy onsite or a combination thereof. And I guess I'll say, uh, adopt a resolution for the conditional use permit and coastal permit allowing five thousand square feet of indoor. Cultive, uh, cannabis cultivation, nursery cultivation. At, uh, the parcel that we've been talking about. Does that cover it?
I'll second that motion. This is Commissioner Benson.
Can you leave up the motion for a minute after I do the vote so I can try to get it all down? Commissioner Freitas?
Hi.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're moving along to sea, land, commercial lodging. Oh, sorry, did you need a second there?
You need me to leave that up?
No, it's fine. Sorry Lisa, it's fine.
Ready?
Okay, hello again commissioners. Project, the next project I'm going to present tonight for your consideration is the land commercial lodging conditional use permit. Which proposes to utilize an existing single family home as a vacation rental at twenty-nine ten G Street. In the OR office residential mixed use zoning district. Here's our standard bird's eye view where the subject property is located, the context and city limits. Zooming in twenty-nine ten G Street, it joins the Henderson, Henderson Shopping Center. District to the west and is two blocks south of Henderson Street, two blocks north of Harris Street. And one block east of H Street. Zooming in even closer, you can see the property is immediately adjacent to commercial and residential uses. And it shares an alley with the commercial retail businesses on F Street. And here is a recent street view photo of the subject home from November of last year. So the commercial lodging use is proposed in a, an approximately fifteen hundred square foot three bedroom, one bath home. A detached two car garage can be accessed from the alley. The, the owners, we, the CUP will allow the owner to switch between long-term and short-term rentals. Or be owner occupied. Uh, so because new single family residents, residential uses, excuse me. Are not allowed in the OR zone district and the applicants do not intend to permanently convert the use of the site to commercial lodging. But instead want the ability to switch between using the site as commercial lodging and as a lo- a long-term rental, which is thirty days or more. Or it could be owner occupied as a single family home. So this CUP will allow the site to be used as commercial lodging or as a single family home, but not both at the same time. The applicant has some house rules that are attached to your staff reports. Some of them include no more than four adult guests, no pets, quiet time, et cetera. They do not require any changes to the interior or exterior of the property in order to support the new use. So the subject property is located in an area of OR zoned properties that is intended to act as a buffer between the higher. Intensity Henderson Center Zone District to the west and the lower density residential low zone properties to the east. Because the project does not require any modifications to the property. Uh, and it will be available as a long-term rental in the future. The character scale and form of the neighborhood can be retained, which is consistent with the purposes of the OR zone district. Also, the proposed short-term rental complies with the other objectives and purposes of the general plan, the zoning code in. The OR zone districts, excuse me, how did you said that? And all required findings can be made to approve it. So for these reasons. Staff recommends you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving with conditions the use permit and here is a recommended. Motion and I will cancel screen sharing for comments, discussion. Thank you.
Uh, questions for staff?
Is it, is it the intention of the owner to, um, for this to be basically like a VRBO type? Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I believe, um, one of the applicants is in the audience and Zoom. Travis.
Yes, I am here.
I have a question. How many, uh, of these vacation rentals are currently on the books right now in the city? And if you don't know, I'm kind of popping that on you, so I'm, I don't feel that.
Yeah, I don't know, but Christine Kenyon's on the line and she actually has, is recently working on this.
Yeah, right now we have, uh, thirty, about thirty-eight permitted, uh, that have. Active business license and are paying TOT. But we also have enlisted, um, a specialized consultant that's tracking. About sixty platforms, uh, for people advertising online, so we know. That total, we have a range of eighty to a hundred and eighteen. Operating at any one time permitted and unpermitted.
Um, I guess I was reading the code and I, this is a question for staff. It seems as though we're hearing this as a, and I had it in my head and I forgot it. There are two or, there's two different ways that these are handled under the code. There's commercial lodging. And then there's vacation rentals. And are we looking at those as separately described, but ultimately pointing to the same general activity?
So in a mixed use zone district, um, they're referred to as commercial lodging, even though they are a residential use. There are vacation rentals, um, in the residential zone districts.
And do the commercial lodging provisions of the code predate the vacation rental provisions?
No.
Okay.
They were done at the same time.
Cause there's some performance standards that are referenced in the code, but they seem to be pointed to in the vacation rental section, but not in the commercial lodging. Yeah, okay. And, and when did we adopt the, the vacation rental provisions?
So there was vacation rental provisions in the code in two thousand nineteen when the zoning code was op- uh, originally adopted. We did make some modifications to it, um, to indicate the proprietor onsite versus no proprietor. And use permits and that kind of thing, but generally the regulations have not changed.
But prior to twenty nineteen, there wasn't a pathway for vacation rentals?
There was actually for vacation dwelling units, yes.
I think that's mostly my questions.
I'm glad to hear that staff is tracking unpermitted units. I'm very glad to hear that. And is there currently a cap on the number in town? I don't believe there is, but can you verify?
There is not, and when we presented, um, information to the council at their last meeting, we. Staff recommended at that time that they not implement a cap. At least until we figure out, have a better idea of actually who is going to become permitted as we work through the process and how many we're gonna have. Additionally, um, the new laws that were passed by the state prohibit. ADUs that were finalled after decen- or, excuse me, after January first, twenty twenty from being used as short-term rentals. And SB nine also prohibits any unit that's created through SB nine from being used as a short-term rental.
Yeah, gonna be hard to track that. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Hunter Getson, and thank you for that question, Commissioner Freitas, because it, it. It seemed to me that we were potentially looking at vacation rentals and whether they're potentially contrary to the arena housing goals, but it seems like there's not. A conflict there. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll open it up to public comment and there's no one here. It looks like the applicant is. Here if they'd like to address the commission. You're certainly not required to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were waiting for me. This is Travis Land. No, I was just waiting online to see if this was approved or disapproved or whatever. I have no comments at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Landis, Commissioner Benson, I just have one question, you know, related to these kinds of vacation rentals and I'm sure it's, maybe there's, there's already language in this. Uh, about this. Is there, is there a maximum amount of people? You know, I guess I'm worried about what I hear about a lot in Trinidad and other places is that somebody rents one of these places. And they say there's gonna be four of us and suddenly it's a party of thirty, um, going at it, um, having a good time. Is there, is there any? Are there, what ways might you be thinking to limit that? Kind of disturbance of the neighborhood of, of too many people using the space?
I haven't really gotten into the, like, how am I gonna limit it, but it's my house and, uh, I am definitely not gonna let anyone destroy it. My mom, it's the neighborhood I grew up in. My mom lives a block away. I've owned that house for probably seven years. It's probably like my pride and joy. Probably like, I would assume the whole driving by and just checking on it. I haven't really gotten that far under my belt. Like, obviously I'm still waiting on this, uh, permit before I can do anything. But it seems like a logical business reason, like there's always people. In my line of work, there's always people here from out of town. And this is all they've been renting and, uh, some of the houses they've been renting, I've been seeing and I was like, they're nothing special and. I'm really just trying to get my foot to the door with, as far as like the working people, like the people that come here for a month at a time. And just want somewhere to stay instead of spending all of their per diem in a hotel, which is costing a fortune. It's, it's a more economical way for them. I'm not really looking for the party scene. I'm not trying to do a, a house that would even. Invite people to party there, if that makes any sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do think the city codes addresses some of that as well in the, in the permitting process and what's required. I don't know if you have it up there.
May I provide some clarification, Commissioner Benson?
Yes, please do.
So I've been working closely with Travis's wife, Sarah Land, and she has submitted, and it's included as an attachment to the staff report, her good guest guide. And um a part of that is she wants to limit it to four people and does not want to allow any events or parties. And wants to follow the loud noises ordinance in there. It it asks the guests to follow the parking, you know, on street parking regulations in that area. Um, it's, it'll encourage uh guests to use the garage. So I think they have a, Sarah, Sarah Land was the one working on the good guest guide, that she'll make sure all the guests are reviewed.
Thank you very much. I I do see that in in the report now.
And I believe.
Thank you for adding that. My wife uh regrets deeply not being able to be a part of this, but she is in Atlanta tonight for work, so uh she she appoints me to be on this, and I know little to nothing, just so you know.
So I just for Commissioner Benson, and I want to make sure I'm reading this right, but the code seems to specify that the maximum number of occupants allowed in a vacation rental cannot exceed two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons. Um, so, and and it does specify things regarding events and the number per year. So i- am I reading that wrong? Okay, please, please help me understand what I'm reading wrong.
Well, yes, those uh regulations do apply to vacation rentals. They don't apply to commercial lodging.
And if I could clarify, the maximum occupants would be what's determined by the building code, and I'm not quite sure what that calculation is. But it wouldn't be for like a large party, because I think on Dolbear Street, when that came forward, we looked into that. And I mean, I think it was like ten people max. I I can't remember off the top of my head, but um, we did include a condition in there, which is to be consistent with the residential zoned vacation rentals to ensure that there is an inspection at least prior to operating, to make sure there's no health and safety concerns. But yeah, there is no specific limit to tenants, except for what the owner will limit.
Well, and that's the application that's before you tonight. They've proposed to allow four adults as the guests there, so that would be what they were approved for if the commission were to approve the use permit.
So another way of putting this, just more uh uh, I don't know, instrumental to my under- is what i- in ki- in situations where we're dealing with commercial lodging, we need to be clear about what is allowed under the permit we approve. And the applicant describes what they are seeking, and we get to yea or nay, and that gets locked into what their limits are.
You have that op-
Doesn't have, speak to it.
You have that opportunity when a commercial lodging is a conditionally permitted use, as it is in the OR zone district. Uh, commercial lodging in other zone districts uh is principally permitted, and you would not have that opportunity then.
Right, right. So, so it sounds like tonight the the project before us would would be a four person limit on stay.
All right. Any more questions? Discussion? I can't make a motion, I don't believe, so I'm relying on my fellow commissioners.
Would you like me to pull up the motion again?
Yes, please.
Oh, no. Let's not, let's switch this.
Thank you for bringing that up. This is Commissioner Benson, and I will make the motion. I move the planning commission to adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the land commercial lodging use permit at twenty nine ten G Street in the OR office residential zone district.
I'll second.
Sorry, I just can't type as fast as you guys talk. All right, Commissioner Freitas?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to D, revision to January twenty twenty zoning code update, oh, twenty twenty two, sorry, zoning code update.
And before we get started, I apologize for not asking this question earlier, but I uh do own property in the city that could be impacted by some of these updates, and I'm wondering if I should recuse myself from the decision, or if that would mean that every person in the city who own property may have to recuse themselves.
Which particular part?
The um changes to the floor area ratio in the R three zone.
I think that
In the case of it being uncertain, I'd be one hundred percent happy just to recuse.
My first thought is that if folks had to recuse because they own a property that might be impacted by this, then we would never be able to get the item moved forward.
Right.
So I think um in this particular instance, it would be fine if you're comfortable um with you participating in.
Okay, and apologies again for not asking that in advance.
Okay, I think I have it. So, good evening, um commissioners. At your last meeting in December, um you recommended that the city council adopt the January twenty twenty two zoning code update. And you included recommendations that were made by the commission um in that action. Since then, new information and staff's understanding of Senate Bill nine, which became effective on January first, twenty twenty two, has continued to evolve. And tonight, we're recommending some changes to the language related to SB nine, which is previously recommended by the commission, as I mentioned. Additionally, um SB four seventy eight has also become effective on January first, twenty twenty two, and we're taking this opportunity to update the code to comply with that bill. And since we're coming back to you with with some revisions, we've also taken this opportunity to propose several non-related minor amendments to the chapter that have come to light since we originally drafted this version of the January twenty twenty two zoning code update. All of these proposed changes and amendments are only applicable in the inland portion of the city, which is shown in color on your map. So what are the changes that we're talking about this evening? First, uh, the December recommendation included adding multifamily residential as a principally permitted use in the residential estate and residential low zone districts. Unfortunately, doing so triggered additional requirements for things like lighting, solid waste facilities, limitations on vehicle parking, and requirements to add bicycle parking, all of which are great regulations, but staff does not believe that those should apply to single family residences. Therefore, staff is re- recommending that we uh delete that multifamily use from table two oh four. Next, um language is proposed in an effort to clear, to be clear on the uses that are allowed under SB nine. And in general, uh for residential estate and low zone parcels, without using the allowances provided in SB nine, one single family residence, a junior ADU, and an ADU are allowed. Under SB nine, an additional single family home can also be allowed. Then, if you use the subdivision provision provided in SB nine, we're proposing to actually allow one single family home, a junior accessory dwelling unit, and either an accessory dwelling unit or another single family residence. The state law does not require us to allow the accessory dwelling unit or the junior accessory dwelling unit when the subdivision is used under SB nine. Additionally, we are proposing to change the term R one urban lot split in the subdivision section to just read urban lot split. Senate Bill four seventy eight, which was also effective on January first, twenty twenty two, prescribes that housing developments must allow floor area ratios that are at least one point zero for three to seven units and one point two five for eight to ten units. These are in the multifamily zone districts, so R two and R three. Staff is proposing to change the maximum floor area ratio in our zoning code for R two and R three to one point two five for both those zone districts. That then triggers the need to change the maximum height that's allowed in those own districts. Um, the maximum height for primary structures on lots between two thousand and five thousand nine hundred and ninety nine square feet is proposed to be thirty five feet. And that's without regard to lot size. And staff is also recommending that existing height limitations be applied to detached only accessory structures based on the lot area. Other proposed changes include language that clarifies how vacation rental permits may continue or lapse and minor modifications for clarity to language in the ADUs vacation rental section of the code. Next, in the subdivision section for small lot subdivisions, staff is proposing a maximum lot area for parcels resulting from small lot subdivisions, while also accepting the lot that contains an existing primary residence from that lot area maximum. And as noted previously, we're going to remove the term R one from urban lot split. Finally, staff is recommending the word in definition for existing be deleted from the defined terms in the glossary. And the reasoning and analysis for all of these recommenda- recommended changes is included in attachment three in your staff report. I do apologize if it appears that's attachment three came before attachment two in your staff report. Staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending council approve the January twenty twenty two zoning code update with the revisions made by the planning commission at their December meeting and the revisions recommended by staff tonight. I have a suggestion motion whenever you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, have questions for staff?
I have a quick question about the um maximum lot size for the urban lot split. Could you um run us through the rationale for that, so I don't have to search for the attachment? Sorry to be lazy.
The maximum for the urban lot split or for the small lot subdivision?
The small lot subdivision, thank you.
So the reasoning behind that was because uh to staff, the name of the subdivision says it all. It's supposed to be for small lots. So taking a lot that's ten thousand square feet and dividing it into two doesn't necessarily get you to small lots or any small lots to be able to develop on. So um based on the language that's in the general plan and language that's in the zoning code currently, staff is recommending that there be a maximum limit put on the size of the new lots so that they are indeed small lots. And I think that doing so will help prevent provo- sorry, promote um additional development of residential units, including lower income units because of the small lot.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kristen, uh could you show that slide where you uh had the side by side lots with the ADU versus the single family residence? I had a tough time following that. I apologize, but I'd like to make sure I understand that. So on the left is SB nine unvarnished, right?
On the left is no SB nine.
Well, well, yeah, pre SB nine, but then once you animate it.
Well, you theoretically, you could still come in much like Mr. Bodie is proposing to do, and propose to build one single family residence and one ADU. So to me, that's kind of without SB nine.
Right. But where the ADU becomes a residence on the right side, that's, is that essentially uh freeing the residents of the square footage limitations that are imposed under the state law? Is that the 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 difference?
So the difference is that with SB nine, without doing the lot split, they could get two single family homes, one junior ADU and one ADU.
Right.
If they decide to go ahead and utilize the regulations that are in government code six six four one one point seven and do a lot split, they could then um add a junior ADU to that existing single family residence. And then what we're proposing is to allow them either to do an ADU or s- another single family residence. So the law says that they can do the two single family residences. The law also says that we don't have to allow them to do any junior or accessory dwelling units. We're proposing that they can do the junior, and they can do either or for the ADU and the, or the single fam- second single family.
Only coming into play where we're dealing with in the wake of a a lot split.
Correct. An urban lot split.
Right, that as as invoked under SB nine and the government codes, yeah. So am I understanding it right? I I thought my understanding was unless the code specifies elsewhere that the state law has a cap on a detached ADU of twelve hundred square feet, if you put a junior accessory dwelling unit on there, has to occupy the, be within the footprint of the primary residence that was in existence, and it can expand it a little bit to put in entries and things like that, and then you're committing to tie your hands on the size of your ADU to eight hundred square feet if you build the junior on the same lot as the ADU, that you can't have a twelve hundred with a with a junior. Now, am I reading that wrong? Because I know that might have been the last incarnation of this stuff, and I could be not thinking of the SB nine stuff, but I thought that's the way I remember reading it.
I don't recall seeing that in SB nine.
No, I don't recall seeing it either. I just remember it before SB nine. I don't know if that
So
persists in the government code that kind of, I think it is in there, though. I don't think it was struck, but but I I thought you 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 limit the size of your ADU if you have a junior. Your ADU is no longer the twelve hundred. It's got to be eight hundred.
In our zoning code, you can do up to the twelve.
And we have the ability to say otherwise, and that's why I'm asking, because I I'm not sure.
Yeah, th- the size of your ADU that you're allowed, if you choose to do that, is not changing.
Yeah.
What would change is that you could do a large, you could do a a separate residential unit that's more than twelve hundred square feet, but then it would need to be considered a single family residence.
I'd just like to get a little bit more clarification um on the, on the reason um, you know, for this on the very same topic that that Commissioner Lazar was speaking about, and what I heard um from from you, Principal Hunter Getz, is that the creation of, the the reason for this, the rationale is the creation of more units and possibly lower income units. I'd just like to understand that a little bit better. The smaller the lot size means that the the overall asking price will be less, and and then that's going to hopefully encourage lower income units. Am I understanding that correctly?
So those comments were made in relation to small lot subdivisions and adding the maximum size for the small lot subdivision. These are urban lot splits, kind of two different things. Small lot subdivisions are allowed in um the R two and R three zone district. Urban lot splits are only allowed in R one or residential estate zone districts. But either way, small lots technically should be less expensive. Um, they should uh provide potential property owners with more opportunities to buy property because they are smaller and less expensive. Um, just as construction of an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit um tends to or can um provide housing for low income folks because of the size of the dwelling unit.
And also, just to say from a first person perspective, my home that I own is not necessarily a low income unit, but it was more affordable because it's only twelve hundred square feet. but it was more affordable because it's only twelve hundred square feet.
Any more questions for staff? Do we have to open this to public comment? We'll open to public comment.
And I see no one there but staff, so.
I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I guess I just, this was just a thought when we were talking about the um vacation rental project. And I I'm I'm going to bring it up again and again, probably because I see it as a real issue. Um, you know, the fact that we have this comprehensive survey of Eureka's historical landscape that has been severely compromised in the way that it was codified through the um the local register and giving landowners the ability to opt out. Um, I'd really like to see a way of incentivizing people to be on register, submit to greater scrutiny. I understand the 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 reason why someone might not do that, but um insofar as vacation rentals are not allowed in structures that have a certificate of occupancy after you know, twenty twenty, right? I think that's the way I read it. And if you're using these SB nine provisions for, you know, or just the government code provisions for allowing greater density on residential, single family properties. I'd like to see uh an uh a commitment to being placed on the register in exchange for a vacation rental. You know, as we do these sting operations on the various unpermitted Airbnbs force people into either going through the permitting process and getting approval. I'd like to see buildings that should be on the register placed on the register and protected, you know, from future loss or abuse through redevelopment and and this is a way, I think, it's not really the carrot approach, which I always prefer, but um I think when you're getting something, it's reasonable to ask you to give something and it's not giving anything other than a future obligation to submit to restriction. So um I'd throw that out there for the other commissioners. I know it's not part of the package we're seeing, but since we're talking about these things and it is tied into the vacation rental element, which is in the code with respect to not allowed if you're, you know, using these provisions. You got to keep it as housing for people on a thirty day or late greater basis. For for the the short term rentals, I I'd like to see that um maybe, you know, or just see what what my other commissioners think about that.
We have kind of a similar situation in Arcata in that we have vacation rentals and we have historic preservation incentives, one of which is you know, permitting other uses that might not be allowed in the zone and commercial lodging falls into that. Um, but I guess I would also note that it only works as a carrot because we have a cap on the number and so people want to get in to that. So without a cap, it wouldn't necessarily be much of an incentive, but I think it would definitely be worth exploring in the future. I I think I understand where you're going with it and I think it would be worth discussing more.
I'd be curious what um what you were thinking that the nexus might be between a vacation rental and a requirement to add to the historic preservation.
Uh, nexus.
Local register.
Oh, is that a thing?
And I and I'm sorry, I I'm just, I'm racking my brain trying to figure out, you know, is there one?
Hmm, yeah, well, you
And and we can certainly think about it and talk about it in the future.
Yeah, I'm not saying I've got that one sorted out. You're, it's a fair question, certainly, and uh but it is uh, it is, it is leveraging your sort of historical nature in a very broad use of that term to qualify you like you, you're not, you're not saddled with the SB. You didn't do it as an accessory unit. You didn't try to bump your density. This was part of the the built baseline environment and therefore you you get a pass on all the scrutiny and but in exchange for that kind of committing to either you know, protecting the structure, I think. But, you know, it it is, it is a little bit out of left field for sure, yeah. But ways of trying to get people to to commit to the is those protections and making it less onerous is always, you know, important. And I think, yeah, Arcata, to the extent that you get to give people things above and beyond, maybe that's the thing, you know, it's like you you can get a permit for, you know, the the boilerplate vacation rental, or you can get a little bit more than that if you agree, if you're a historical, if you're an eligible historical structure and and agree to be uh placed on the register.
Well, and I think technically too, I mean, if there was a neighborhood that wanted to try to try and ensure that their neighborhood re- remained as is. They could uh uh opt in for listing on the local register because then under SB nine, you can't you can't do the subdivision and so.
But uh there's been so much fragmentation and and the efforts to create local districts, the Clark District, I think, you know, have been very difficult to get, you know, off the ground. So, yeah, okay, well, just thought I'd bring it up while we're talking about the code updates because it seemed like there could be some way of treating it in the future.
Someone prepared to make motion?
I think I would be comfortable doing so. Um, let me find it or if someone wants to bring it up, we can do a race. Ah, okay, you won. Okay. I move the planning commission, adopt a resolution, making the findings required to revise and approve the text amendment, and I further move we forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt the January twenty twenty-two zoning code update with revisions.
Uh, I'd be willing to second that.
Commissioner Freitas?
I.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mayer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving along, it looks like we have neither old business or new business. Which will take us down to reports and communications and it appears we have a draft report about sea level rise analysis.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Kristen, did you want to say anything else before I get started on this?
I'll go after you. Thank you.
Okay. So let me share my screen. Am I sharing the next slide too, or are you just seeing the current slide?
No, you're on the correct screen.
Sweet. Okay, this is in response to uh request last planning commission um to, and this presentation is focused on the topic of addressing sea level rise in coastal development permitting. So I'm gonna first just briefly touch on um sea level rise best available science. And then I'm going to talk about addressing sea level rise in project permitting. Um, the coastal commission's guidance and compare comparing that to the city's recent project permitting. Um, I'm not gonna talk about Eureka's vulnerability to sea level rise or how the city plans to address sea level rise outside of our role as regulator. And we have a great deal of information on both these topics and I'm happy to present on them at some time in the future. There are relatively large tectonic vertical land motions on the north coast of California. And as a result, the ground in the Humboldt Bay area is actually sinking or subsiding. Uh, and due to this local subsidence, Humboldt Bay has the highest rate of sea level rise in California. While global average sea level is currently rising at a rate of one point seven millimeters per year, the sea level at the North Spit Tide Gauge is currently rising at four point nine one millimeters per year, almost three times the global rate. Uh, crazy enough, Crescent City, which is about seventy miles north of here, is actually uplifting. And it's currently uplifting faster than local, than long-term global sea level rise, although not for long. The Ocean Protection Council or OPC's most recent sea level rise guidance includes sea level rise projections that are used by the California Coastal Commission as current best available science. Prior to twenty eighteen, these sea level rise projections did not include localized numbers for Humboldt Bay. However, the new sea level rise projections published and adopted by the OPC and Coastal Commission in twenty eighteen include projections specific to twelve locations up and down the state, including the North Spit Tide Gauge. So to answer Commissioner Benson's question from the last meeting, the OPC's projections for the North Spit Tide Gauge do in fact consider the combined effects of sea level change and local subsidence. So here are the numbers for the North Spit Tide Gauge from the OPC Sea Level Rise Guidance that the city staff has been using as best available science in our recent coastal permitting. There are recommendations for use in low, medium, high, and extreme risk aversion decisions. We have been using the low risk and medium high risk aversion projections in our permit findings as the basis of our sea level rise analysis. I have a bunch of additional slides on the OPC's numbers and background science uh that I'm happy to discuss tonight or at a later time if you guys are interested. Uh, the coastal commission currently has three sea level rise guidance documents available on their website, including a general sea level rise policy guidance document first adopted in twenty fifteen with that science update in twenty eighteen that I mentioned. This document includes general procedures for addressing sea level rise in coastal development permitting. The commission also has draft residential adaptation policy guidance on their website that includes model local coastal program policies that reflect how the coastal commission has been addressing sea level rise and permitting in their retained jurisdiction. The coastal commission also recently adopted critical infrastructure guidance in November of twenty twenty-one that includes model LCP policies specific to critical infrastructure. All the sea level rise guidance put out by the coastal commission is really derived from just a few hazard policies in the coastal act and predominantly from one policy, Coastal Act three oh two five three. Uh, there's a version of this policy in our certified LCP and it states in part that development in Eureka's coastal zone shall minimize risk to life and property in areas of high geologic and flood hazard. The coastal commission's seal rise guidance suggests that to minimize risk consistent with this policy, we must consider how flood risk may change over the life of the development with sea level rise. The other main coastal act hazard policy is Coastal Act three oh two three five, which gives certain development a right to armoring, shoreline protection, coastal dependent uses and existing structures and public deep beaches in danger of erosion. In contrast, under the coastal act, new development, other than new coastal dependent development, has no right to shoreline protection and can only use shoreline armoring if the armoring can be found fully consistent with all the policies of the coastal act. Because new development has no right to armoring, when we permit new development, we cannot assume that it will be able to rely on the protection of any intervening shoreline structures according to the commission's guidance. So for instance, the future England Marine Store that the planning commission just permitted is on a low-lying site that is currently protected from Humboldt Bay by rock slope protection, uh, public parking and marine away. There is a really good chance that as sea levels rise, the city will augment the rock slope protection and or raise marine away. And as a result, the store site will remain safe from flooding. Title flooding, that is. And however, the city could not rely on that future offsite shoreline augmentation in our hazard findings for the new store approval. And instead had to demonstrate that the store would be properly elevated to be safe from shoreline flooding regardless of what happens with the intervening armoring. Following commission guidance, we also included a condition that stated that by acceptance of this permit, the permit acknowledges that development is not entitled to shoreline protection. So now that we've covered the basic policy framework, I'm going to explain in detail what our seal of rise analysis looks like. So when there is development proposed in the coastal zone, we first do some initial screening. And of course, the first question we ask is whether the project is potentially subject to coastal flooding or erosion over its anticipated life. And if it's potentially at risk, the second question we ask is about the extent of the project. And if it's new development, like a new structure, then we do a full sea level rise analysis. In contrast, if it's just repair and maintenance or use of an existing structure, we don't perform a sea level rise analysis. So for instance, the city did not perform a sea level rise analysis for the cannabis clone nursery proposed in an existing building on Jacob's Avenue. If the project constitutes redevelopment, then the coastal commission guidance is very clear that it must be treated as new development and a full sea level rise analysis is necessary. The commission's regulations define redevelopment as replacement of fifty percent or more of a structure. So what does sea level rise analysis look like for a new structure? Really, what it often boils down to is determining how much we need to elevate the structure or the site or the minimum floor area of the habitable space um to minimize risk. And this involves three basic choices. The first is how far into the future we consider risk. Do we just look to twenty fifty or do we look at risk all the way to twenty one hundred or some other year? Uh, the second choice we make is the sea level rise scenario that we use for the selected projection year, whether we use the low, medium, high, or extreme risk aversion scenarios provided by the OPC. Finally, we have to decide what base elevation we are added, adding the projected sea level rise amount on to. Are we elevating above the daily average high tide? The monthly average high tide, average king tides, one hundred year flood event, or some other baseline? So starting with the planning horizon, the commission recommends considering potential sea level rise over the anticipated duration or life of the proposed structure, after which the structure is expected to be removed, replaced, or redeveloped. Uh, for temporary, secondary, and amenity structures like trails, uh, the commission's guidance says it's okay to assume a design life of twenty-five years or less. Uh, for new residential and commercial structures, they find a seventy-five to one hundred year design life acceptable. And for critical infrastructure like bridges, the commission starts the assumption that the design life is one hundred plus years. So moving on to the second choice, selecting the sea level rise scenario, the commission recommends that the analysis consider a range of future scenarios for the selected time horizon. And they recommend that the scenario actually utilized for citing and design of the development depend on the development's degree of risk to life and property and how that might impact coastal resources in the future. So according to the coastal commission's guidance, low risk aversion scenarios may be used for projects that would have limited consequences from flooding or a higher ability to adapt. So for instance, this boat ramp can withstand flooding and there are no, not any serious consequences from it flooding occasionally. So if it were redeveloped, the commission would be okay with us using a low risk aversion scenario. Medium high risk aversion scenarios should be used for decisions with greater quantities consequences and or a lower ability to dat- adapt. And in comments on recent city projects, the commission staff has made it clear that this is the scenario we should be using for new commercial and residential structures. Extreme risk aversion scenarios should be used for projects with little to no adaptive capacity that would be destroyed or significantly costly to repair and or would have considerable public health, public safety, or environmental impacts should that level of sea level rise occur. So for example, if someone were proposing a new bulk fuel storage facility on the shoreline, it would be required to be designed to be safe for its design life, get it given extreme sea level rise. Sorry, given extreme risk aversion sea level rise scenarios. So to put these first two steps in context, let's think about what would be required for a new mixed use development on the city's waterfront. To be consistent with the coastal commission guidance, we would need to assume a design life for the new structure of at least seventy-five years. And we would use the medium high risk aversion seal of rise projection. Pulling up the OPC's numbers for the Humboldt Bay North Spit Tide Gauge, we realize that we need to design our new structure accounting for six point three to seven point six feet of sea level rise. So that brings us to our third choice that we need to make, which is selecting the tidal or storm event we want to avoid flooding during in the future. Consistent with their guidelines on sea level rise projections, the commission recommends the analysis consider a range of base elevations, including a worst case scenario that considers the inland extent of flooding and wave run-up associated with extreme tidal conditions and storm events. Um, in terms of what baseline actually gets selected for citing and design, and again, it depends on the degree of risk to life and property. So again, let's think about our hypothetical mixed-use development on the waterfront where we need to account for six point three to seven point six feet of sea level rise. Um, if we want the project to be elevated above the future every, average monthly highest tide, we need to add seven point six feet of sea level rise to the current mean monthly maximum water level of seven point seven four feet and raise the site or structure to fifteen point three four feet in elevation. If we want the project to be safe in the future from future average king tides, we need to add seven point six feet of sea level rise to the current mean annual maximum water level of eight point eight feet. Um, and if we want it to be above the future one hundred-year still water level at the North Spit Tide Gauge, which is currently ten point two feet, uh, NAVD eighty-eight, we would need to elevate the structure to seventeen point eight feet in elevation. So this is a screenshot of the city's publicly available web GIS viewer and there is a layer that displays topographic lines. And according to our GIS specialist, these elevations are referenced to NAVD eighty-eight, same as the elevations I've been discussing in the slideshow. The current elevation at the site that we are talking about, this hypothetical project site, is ten to eleven feet. If we wanted to ensure safety from the one hundred still water level through twenty one hundred under a medium-high risk aversion scenario, then we're looking at having to elevate the site or the structure or the habitable space of the structure five and a half to six and a half feet above the current ground elevation. And that could be really costly and it could have issue, other issues. And so that brings us to feasibility. So again, the standard is ultimately minimize risk, which allows us to take feasibility into account. Uh applicant is welcome to propose a floor elevation for the new structure and make an argument explaining why there is no feasible alternative that further minimizes risk while protecting coastal resources in the short term. If for some reason it is not feasible to elevate the development above the projected amount of sea level rise for its anticipated design life, the coastal commission's guidance explains that is it is acceptable to initially design the project for a lower sea level rise projection as long as the applicant understands and takes responsibility for the risk and provides an adaptive management plan explaining what measures will be taken if and when we start to near those higher sea level rise scenarios. Um, the commission recommends only giving the project a temporary permit authorization that requires the applicant to come back at future, at a future date or sea lower rise trigger with a reassessment of hazards and implementation of adaptation measures or removal of the structure if necessary to minimize risk. Um, so again, this is the elevation that would be ideal by coastal commission standards for a new primary, commercial, or residential, or mixed-use structure. To to justify anything below sixteen and a half feet, uh, the planning horizon, sea level rise projection or base elevation choices need to be adjusted, um, which we've done in permitting. Um, for example, fourteen feet elevation can be argued to be safe if you adjust the base elevation, the sea level rise projection, the planning horizon, or some combination of those. So looking at new structures, we as a city permitted in the coastal zone in twenty twenty, we have been requiring elevation only to thirteen or fourteen feet. Um, Betty's Community Housing Project is a residential project made of temporary removable trailers. So that is why the lower elevation was acceptable to the coastal commission who concurred with the city's approval of the project on appeal. Remember the current one hundred-year still water level at the North Spit Tide Gauge is about ten point two feet in elevation. So the way we are permitting structures at thirteen or fourteen feet, we're attempting to avoid flooding during a one hundred-year event, accounting for three to four feet of sea level rise. This has been acceptable to the coastal commission as long as we attach conditions limiting the permit authorization and having the property owner accept the risk by ensuring they acknowledge they have no right to shoreline armoring to protect their structure in the future and that they are on the hook to remove the structure when it is no longer safe. So I just want to point out a few last differences um between what we're doing and what's recommended. The coastal commission recommends that the sea level rise analysis be included as part of a coastal hazards report prepared by a licensed professional engineer. Um, in twenty twenty, although a lot of our applicants provided geotechnical reports, these reports did not include seal of rise analysis. Uh, we just asked the applicant for the proposed finished floor elevation and we performed the seal of rise analysis ourselves. Um, the coastal commission also recommends that ideally the sea level rise analysis consider all potential flooding pathways, including stormwater drainage and rising groundwater issues. Um, whereas ours and most all seal of rights analysis I've seen to date is really a simplified analysis that's just looking, accounting for direct tidal flooding from the shoreline and assuming one foot of sea level rise at the North Spit Tide Gauge is equal to one additional foot of concern at a project site, uh, which is a false assumption in a lot of cases. Um, so that's all I wanted to present tonight. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for a really excellent and clear report that answered a lot of my questions uh and why I had asked for that guidance. Thank you.
Thank you also, um, this Commissioner Benson for for providing the rationale for for how the city is doing this that at this time, we know this is a moving target and we know that policy will evolve. Um, you know, as as sea level rise evolves, I guess the, you know, some of the stuff that's that I am concerned about sort of looking forward is is when there's a double event where you have sea level rise and you have hundred-year storm and so, you know, we're already experiencing backwater flooding flooding into the stormwater system at King Tide. So and and luckily, so far, we haven't had big rain events at King Tide events where where we're starting to see flooding that is, that's related to sea level rise, but it's not directly sea level rise. It's just, it's it's backwater effect and and at what point, there's no getting around policy to to have some level of retreat that 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 may be some, you know, it's it's political death, of course, to for anyone to say that. But um, you know, how at risk are we? We know that that, that this wasn't intended to be a big risk analysis. But those those continue to be concerns. But this was really valuable to see how the city is doing it at this time and it seems very prudent. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo my fellow commissioners. Uh, I appreciated the presentation. I felt like it was very thorough and and also very um understandable, um, which is not always easy and and yeah, I think that uh understanding the different types of development and how the coastal commission views the the different risk scenarios is also helpful because that doesn't really come through a lot of times in a boiled-down staff report. You understanding the sort of range of ways that it can be treated. So I I particularly appreciate you you walking through that. You did a really good job, so thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Looks like we're done. We're adjourned? No.
Kristen has some.
I have a list. Almost.
I tried. I did, I tried to slide it in there. I do see that there's uh one point two, but I did my best.
So just wanted to give you a heads up on some things that um are gonna be on your radar in the, in the not-too-distant future. Um, we are going to be kicking off a waterfront specific plan uh with the public and with the council. February, March-ish, still up in the air as to exactly when, but um the, that will be coming to you at some point in the future. Um, we continue to work on our local coastal program update forever and ever. Someday we'll get it done. We're also working on Igultas and Greenways ordinance that at some point in time will be coming to you all. And um, the climate action plan is uh in draft thanks to the County of Humboldt staff and um the other jurisdictions here in Humboldt County. We should be seeing um an environmental review draft, I think, in the not-too-distant future. And there will be opportunities in the future for public comment and um input and comment by the planning commission. Next month's meeting, um, the new projects that are proposed for the capital improvement program will be coming before you um from engineering. And uh, senior planner Topoluski is working on that cannabis amendment that was mentioned earlier. Uh, his plan is to bring that to you um kind of as a director's report kind of thing, giving you an opportunity to review it, ask questions, make suggestions, and then it would come back to you for a public hearing at a regular meeting. We'll also be working on um the general plan and housing element annual progress report, um, and that'll come to you sometime, probably second quarter of this year. And exciting news on the backside is that um staff is working on uh, a new program, um, an online program where people will uh apply for projects and permits fully online. So we're looking forward to rolling that out at some point in time this year. Hopefully, we can get all that work done. Um, and then lastly, unless there's any questions from the commission, um, unfortunately, because of the COVID uh numbers that we are seeing right now, um, all of our meetings are gonna go back to Zoom for the foreseeable future. And um, we will come back to being in person as soon as we possibly can. But at this point in time, if all things are remaining the same, I would imagine that our February meeting will be by Zoom. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Are you sure? Prepare to see my cat on the computer a little bit, but I'll try and keep him out.
I can't wait. That's gonna be the best. All right, meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Steph.